All right. All right, uh, welcome, everybody. The November second, uh, Carolina Town and Works Public Hearing on the two thousand twenty three budgets and the uh, agenda for November. I'll start the meeting with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Good, thank you.
And uh, second, yeah. So tonight, we're gonna start uh, the meeting with the uh, public hearings on the two thousand twenty-three um, Caroline uh preliminary budget. And so I will see if I can share my screen to do that. Okay, why is, go away. All right, uh, the uh, so I will proceed to present the budget for the general fund and the highway fund uh. And um, the first data slide are the salaries of uh, public officials. We um, we raised those by four point five percent across the board for each position. And um, our intent is to also provide a four point five percent increase for wage rate employees. So we will need to do that by resolution um, at the end of the year, but that is in the budget, there's enough money for that, and that was our intent um. And this desk, okay, um. Then here's uh, probably too wordy of a slide just to describe um, property taxes. So I will just describe it the when we, when we establish, when we uh, work up the budget, we estimate expenditures and revenues um, for the upcoming year, and the difference is made up by the tax levy. That's what we, that determines um, the property taxes. So that's the the bundle of money that's split up amongst all of the properties in Caroline. Um, the fund balance is just, um, those are uncommitted reserves that the town has. And those can be used to offset the tax levy amount that's calculated. And we do that virtually every year, and it allows us to adjust uh, properly to keep uh, the amount of money um, that, that we charge the public appropriate to their, to the um, to the services that we provide. And um, as most people know, in um, the state, the state has a tax cap of two percent um, or the rate of inflation, um, whichever is less. Um, and so um, I go into a handy little comptroller site and we get a there's a growth factor in there and other things are taken into consideration increases in the levy and you get a number and so um, that's, that's what we strive to say under. Um, if a town does feel like they need to exceed the tax cap, you can override the tax cap by local law, and that's all you have to do. Um, but you better make sure you do it, or you're gonna have to go through some kind of wonky procedures like establishing a reserve to recover that money for the next year. So total assessed value is just the sum of all the property assessments in the town. And so once those are all summed up, it's a big number in the spreadsheet. And then the whatever we come up with as the amount to re, be raised by taxes is divided amongst that total assessed value. So um, and I think that's an important thing to remember when the assessment department is doing assessments, just because your assessment goes up doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go up. It's just a, what they're doing is trying to keep uh, an accurate estimate of the value of each property. And as you can imagine, if they all go up a little bit by the same amount, then it's spread over that same, you, you know, you, you're not gonna suffer. It's gonna be spread uh proportionally uh among property. So that's my one long-winded summary of, of what we're doing tonight and, and what is, it's gonna end up in your mailbox. Um, so uh, here are, uh, this just shows the um, so the appropriations are the expenditures estimated that we came up with for the general fund and the highway fund across the top row and the combined amount. Uh, the revenues um, and then, and so the difference, the difference has to be made up somehow. Um, and um, at this point, we have uh, resolved to apply one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of fund balance to offset the levy, to lower the tax levy. Um, and I think, as I mentioned last time, I did look at like the twenty-year average, and that's very close to what the average is. It's not exorbitant. That's just sort of the the fudge factor that goes, you know, it may vary between years, but that's what the average is. So the amount to raise uh, in two thousand twenty-three came out to, after applying that one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, came out to one million seven hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Uh, it's a bit less than last year. So that's good. And, and just to precede the the finale of this, we, we did resolve to apply under seventy-six thousand dollars in order to keep the levy um, flat this year. We thought that made sense based on the amount of reserve funds that the town had. So the bottom section shows the change in total assessed value that I mentioned earlier. Um, so you can see uh, properties have been added, um, buildings have gone up, and properties have been reassessed, and that results in an increase eh, between last year and this year, uh, or the estimate for next year, three point two percent increase. Um, so applying the amount to be raised in two thousand twenty-three to that and comparing that to last year will result in um, a four point four percent reduction in the tax rate. And um, you can't say what the taxes are gonna do for any particular home. But I just used a crude estimate, not changing the assessed value, that would be like a five percent reduction in the tax for a two hundred thousand dollar home. That comes up. So um, oh, I switched them around. Don't see that. I hate that when the touchpad does stuff like that. Okay, so um, this is the general fund um. It's titled budget highlights. I don't know how excited you can get about these numbers, but these are the budget highlights broken down by different categories. So um, town board went up by three point nine percent, six percent. And remember, like, that's mostly the the salary increase is responsible for, for that mostly. Uh, uh, court similarly two point two per six percent, supervisor four point one seven percent clerk down sixteen one hundredths of a percent. Uh, town hall, pretty flat, really. Uh, safety inspection or, or code enforcement, that's up five point five three percent, highway administration down three point six five percent, and then the garage um, uh, account is twenty-six percent. And I think that was because of a reorganization of amounts that Bob did shifted between lines. Um, youth services uh, to the joint youth commission and rec partnership, three point five percent, and benefits down five point two percent. So those are general fund uh, budget highlights. The highway fund, oops, don't do that. Okay, highway fund budget highlights um, road repair up uh, fifteen percent. Uh, road capital improvements, flat machinery up fourteen percent. Uh, and benefits up five percent. So um, total highway expenses up about eight percent. There was an in- increase in the um, equip uh, highway equipment line of um, thirty-five thousand dollars um. And it looks like the chips line uh, is higher than last year for the road repair. So. Any questions about those two accounts, either general or highway? So.
Will we allow that?
Uh, I, I will allow that. Yeah, you can. I, I agree. I don't want, if you have a particular question now, I don't wanna just open it up for back and forth, but if do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I um, the benefits on the A side um. Well, see, so these are the guy, right? These are the by highway.
Uh, yes, that's right.
And then on the A side, and that would include like pop you Jesse and whatever.
Code enforcement.
The code guy.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, while I'm asking questions, and by the way, I think you guys.
Okay, this is gonna end soon. Okay. Yeah, and I, I have a presentation, so I wanna get through it. So, thank you.
No, not here.
This is a public hearing, so. I, I will take comments and questions at the end.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thanks. Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, right. So I should have clarified it that at the beginning. So that's that's understandable. Um, I just I just show this to show um, the um, the amounts that we um, that we pay for health insurance, property insurance and workers' comp.
Why didn't workers' comp go down?
Uh, workers' comp went down. So the numbers for worker comp for general and highway stayed flat. Um, but we also do workers' comp for um, the Speedsville Fire Department. And, and that amount was adjusted down a little bit. So.
I think to this question, we know that we have a very good experience rating, and they just look at, you know, how risky.
Okay.
So I think we're seeing some low risk, and we get, we get, we haven't had any loss claims much. So our experience rating has gone up, so we're bringing this down.
Alright.
Keeping the safe working where it is.
So these are the, the town reserve funds that we have, and my calculation of um, where we will be in two thousand twenty-three. So the highway facilities reserve fund um, and we budgeted like we have traditionally since I took office and was started by Don sixty-five thousand for the highway garage. Um, so that account will next year be at uh, almost, almost a half million dollars. Town hall uh, will be at a hundred and forty thousand. And then um, total available funds for highway equipment, which includes the reserve fund and and the expenditure line, which I did for the other lines as well, will be two hundred and seven three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And I, I deducted from that amount um, in last December, we authorized a, a chipper purchase that has not come through yet. So that will be coming out. So um, with that, the next slide um, shows my estimate of um, uncommitted reserve funds. So the savings and checking combined are, it's just the amount of money we have in the bank. Um, the second section, the A two thirty and so on, those are the reserve accounts that I just showed you. And so those are those are sequestered reserves, so they are not available um. For instance, to offset the levy. Um, so those are, those are secured for particular purposes. Um, and I also included in that, the, the last one is the um, the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that we are appropriating or that I am proposing, or we are proposing to appropriate to offset this levy. So that's taken out as well. Um, so what you'll see in the end doesn't include that, right? So that's, that's good. Um, and then I estimated um, from now until the end of the year expenditures for the general and highway funds and revenues. And then I did the math. So um, with that, what all comes out in the wash is about five hundred thousand dollars of um, fund balance, um, which is nineteen percent to twenty percent of of uh, budget expenditures, which is about what we're shooting for. So that's good. Yeah. Yeah. And another look at sort of the trends of fund balance. These numbers are a little different. This is the um, the fund balance uh, number that I took off of um, the trial balance um, between years. So it just shows that um, again, that the fund balance is, is doing okay and is, is well above. Um, well above the minimums that we've, we've set. This does not include expenditures and revenue estimates to the end of the year. So that's why it's, it's a little higher, I think, though. So that um, are we gonna do that, that um? Oops. Yeah, I think. So that is the um, the presentation for the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three Caroline Town General Highway Budgets. And so I'm gonna close the presentation part and open it up for any comments or questions. You will. No, thank you. Mr. Hoyt.
Um, I think you guys have a good job. I'll say that. I understand most of what you said, and you answered a few of my questions in advance. Um, if you could go backwards slide, please. I don't see the article take this way to the five hundred and eleven. Act one. No, forward.
Oops, oh. That one?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Yeah, so five hundred and eleven, that's the estimated total fund balance from the A and the D.
Right.
Okay. And is that derivable from other numbers or?
Is that what?
Which number do you would? Is the five hundred and eleven derivable from other numbers?
Oh, yeah. So let me, let me just explain it. So it's that, that number is the, I'm pointing with my pen on my screen that nobody can see. So the total for savings and checking is uh, uh, one point three million, right?
Right.
So that number minus uh, taking out all the reserve accounts, the six seventy-eight point uh, six seventy-eight, five fifty, so minus that. And then the expenses in A, so minus two oh five, minus three oh four, and then plus forty and plus three forty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and we have half a million saved up to the town highway guard.
Yeah, that's in a reserve account.
That's very good. And I, I was not aware of that. I was, I was gonna ask you how that we're gonna fund that.
Well, we, we will probably have to bond it.
Altogether, you're looking at, what do you think, four million or what do you, what's your?
I don't know. I'm waiting to figure that out. Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be more than.
I mean, it's gonna be more.
It's gonna be more.
I could probably put up for you for a lot of hundred thousand.
For bake sale?
At Cal, love eyes. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Can you see if anyone in the, in the Zoom land has a question, Jesse?
If you could, your screen on. Pretty strange, and you can see that.
I'll stop here.
I was worried that I'd have to go back to my screen, but. Okay. If anybody does have a question, you can raise your blue Zoom hand or, or whatever color your Zoom hand is.
Been yellow for a long.
Yeah. All right. So with that, if there are no further questions or comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three um, Caroline Town General and Highway uh, budgets. And I will open the public hearing on the fire protection district budget and begin that with a brief, very brief presentation. And okay. Okay, um, so this is uh, just comparing two thousand twenty-two and, and twenty-two thousand twenty-three budgets. Um, the Caroline Fire Protection uh, District is compo, is, those services are provided by Speedsville Fire Company and the Brookton Dale Fire District. Um, and they, we have a contract with them each year, and these numbers show their uh, the numbers, the budgets they've asked for. Um, Speedsville um, increased four point two percent, asking for fifty-seven thousand one hundred um, dollars. Um, their documents are in, um, Jesse has those in her office and I did um, attend, I did learn that I think they are planning to buy a new truck. So that's, that's probably part of what's going on. They will, um, so, yeah. And I think their budget was flat last year, too. So um, and then Brookton Dale's budget is flat this year, so no increase. They're asking for twenty thousand nine ninety. Um, and as I mentioned it before, um, we fund the workers' comp for Speedsville. Um, and um, so that adjustment six oh eight oh is actually a an, a, a basically a correction to the number for their workers' comp, I mean, so. Um, and I, I didn't, I'm not proposing applying any fund balance. Um, it's something we could think about. Um, the bottom lines show the tax levy amounts, which are just the sum of those numbers. Um, it went up a little bit based because of that workers' comp number eighty-four, one seventy. Um, the levy went up a lot, eight point one nine percent. So the result of that is when you divide that slight increase in the tax levy amount by a big increase in the total assessed value, the tax rate uh, for fire protection goes down more than seven percent. So. And I think I jumped too far. And these, these are, um, this is fund balance history for the Caroline Fire Protection District. You can see um, the fund balance is pretty high now. Uh, we probably don't want it to go much higher. Um, so I would say, you know, yeah. Either sometime, probably next year, we probably can, wanna keep an eye on that and keep it flat so that it doesn't go higher or um, or we could, we could reduce it this year, too, um, if people wanna.
Next year, we're probably gonna face inflationary pressure. Seems to me to make sense to say that.
Oh, if, if something untoward happened or something. Yeah, okay. It's not a huge amount, but. Yeah. Okay, and um, so I know that was pretty short, but I'm gonna close the presentation for the um, Fire Protection District and um, express my gratitude to the fire departments for their services, and then I'll open it up for any comments from the public. Mr. Hoyt.
One quick question.
Okay.
Um, the find out what's in for grand, you say, is a little on the high side. So the recommendation for what makes these recommendations is not twenty percent of the case of fire protection district. It must be a much smaller.
Probably, yeah. Mm-hmm.
And I assume that these recommendations come from the state comptroller's office, is that what they were saying? I mean, the recommendation is about keeping a twenty percent fund balance for the A and the D.
Yeah, and actually um, yes, that's approximately correct, but they're very careful not to suggest an amount. And I think what they're doing is leaving discretion to the towns. So they um, you know, say things like two months of budgeted expenditures or um, you know, but it's, yeah. I had a hilarious time at, at one comptroller's meeting, Anne Ryder, who used to be the supervisor in Enfield, who is a wonderful person. And, and so we were having this presentation, and she's basically trying to squeeze the answer out of them. And, and she couldn't get it, and finally she just slams her head down. Just tell me a number. Yeah. Yeah.
For the case of the fire, it's much lower percent.
It's probably, yeah, that, that, right.
Five.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any, any, can you see Zoom land there, Jesse? Any hands up? Okay. With that, I will, I'll close the public hearing on the fire department's budget and open the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three Caroline lighting district budget.
Go from one exciting budget together?
Yeah. And this will be the last one. Uh, also short. And um,
Our cows need light.
Yeah, I think that's yeah, it's a nice cow, isn't it?
Cows are a cow.
Looks like it.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So.
And, and more requested of giving shade on.
So that I this is actually, this is actually um, one, one of the previous sodium vapor lights. So I wanted to take a picture of one of the new lights and put it right next to it and see, but I didn't get to that. Well, maybe next year. So this is the same comparison, two thousand twenty-two budget to two thousand twenty-three expenditures. Um, so it pushed it up to four thousand because by watching the expenditures to date um, for for the street light line in our trial balance. So um, that's why it went up. That's why it went up by fourteen point three percent. Um, and so um, you can see the total assessed value went up nine point eight percent. So the tax rate, of course, plummets with that kind of a, of a um, big change in the total assessed value. So fifty percent reduction in the tax rate for the, the Caroline um, Streetlight District.
Um, Which is what we were expecting, eh?
Say what, Cal?
That is what we were expecting, eh?
Um, a reduction in the numbers. Yeah, I don't know about the total assessed value. I mean, yeah. But yeah, so um, and these, so this is the fund balance history for the streetlights. Um, and there's um, this is included, i- if so we are waiting for, for, uh, if you remember, our clean energy communities grant paid for part of the streetlight, the LED thing. So we're waiting for that project to be finished, so we can invoice nicer to. So this, these are the numbers taking into account receipt of that money. So um, so it's, it's um, yeah. I kinda, I wanna, you know, get that process done before I do anything to make adjustments. But um, our streetlight, you know, going forward, our streetlight numbers are gonna be lower because um, we don't have the facilities charged because we own the streetlights now. And our um, energy use is gonna be a lot less, so gonna be a different, a different ballgame. So. Um, great. So that, that concludes the Caroline Streetlights budget information presentation, and I'll open it up for public comment or questions. And I'm sorry, but we only allow two questions. And I'm sorry, but we only allow two questions per night. Mister Hoyt.
But do they? Why such a humongous fund balance? I mean, there's a fund balance of four times.
Right, so the, the reason for that is because the amount we needed to purchase the streetlights was big. And we don't have that money back yet, so, um.
So it's an accounting thing.
It's, it's an accounting thing, yeah, so I will, I, it, this should be, um. You know, the project should be, I'm hoping to conclude it by the end of the year, it may take longer than that, so.
The money that you had the. From, to purchase the stuff. Did that come out of the regular budget or does that come out of one of the other fund balances? I mean, I'm just curious how they come.
Oh, that, that, that came out of the revenue line for the streetlights. So that's why, I mean, if I, yeah, so these, those bars. At the end, the two thousand twenty-one bar will drop if I, if I took that out of there. Right.
You didn't have to invade any other funds.
No.
Through the capital expenditure, and you will get a large reimbursement.
Yeah.
My server.
Yep.
And that large reimbursement will make that fifteen thousand go down, I guess, I don't quite understand the way to say.
No, it, that reimbursement should make it approximate that.
You included that.
I think, I think included that.
So once you're all square with the nicer, then I would say.
This is about where.
I mean, you'll want to maintain a fund balance of like five hundred bucks.
Right, it should be less, yeah, exactly.
Okay, and. I thought this had been done like quite a few years ago, but it kind of will not, I mean, it was an ongoing process to do the capitalization of the. Of the equipment, I thought you guys were talking about that back in like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, did it do there?
It, it, it wasn't then, but I think in the two thousands, um, Steve Nicholson was involved in, in, in like assessing the streetlights.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I think that's a good question, I think that's something that.
I don't remember what the streetlight used to be in the late two thousands when I was on the board, but the idea was pay a bunch of money upfront. And then have lower annual charges because of what I paid NICE to the equipment, is that correct?
Um, I don't think so, or I don't understand it that way, to, to do what?
Well, we, when we were paying for streetlights, we were paying not only for the electricity and power of them. But for some kind of a rental or whatever you wanna call it, I'm like, so, is that right?
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was, um, trying to explain earlier, so. When NICE owned the streetlights. For every streetlight, we paid like seven to eight dollars a month. For, and that's, that was a facilities charge.
Okay.
So that was their charge for maintaining the streetlights. Um, and.
Never chat, never changing the burnt out streetlights.
Exactly, so the real advantage of doing this is now we, we have, we will have a contract. Um, with, uh, a fir- a, a company that services. The streetlights, and, um, those charges will be, should be a lot less because the service needs for these LE streetlights are a lot less and. Um, so, yeah, I think we're gonna be in a much better situation.
We haven't quite got on it yet.
Well, we're, since we bought the streetlights in like September of. Two thousand twenty-one, so since then, we haven't been paying any facilities charges. Which is a lot of money. So that was one of, Terry Carroll explained when we were grappling as municipalities over whether to do this, he said. You really shouldn't be, uh, cause we were, we were concerned about the price that NICE was charging for purchasing and. He said, you're paying so much for facilities. Chargers, don't worry about it, just buy them and stop the flood, and so that really.
It was about a hundred bucks a year for a light.
Yeah.
And, but they were changing bulbs.
Eighty lights, so that's, you know. Yeah, yeah.
How many lights do we talk about? There's a town.
Eighty, seventy-nine, eighty, yeah.
Some of the lights of the CEO render sections are not part of this, right? They're DOT or something, that, that's what I heard from somewhere.
No, they're all ours, in, in Caroline, they're all.
Every single streetlight that I see in the town of Caroline is part of this.
Well, you gotta watch out for firm lights that are just off the road and stuff, there's, yeah, but they're, it's tricky, some of them are pretty close and it's hard to tell, so.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
One's down by the school in the water. In our running district, but there's a school page for them.
Did that change at one point?
Yeah, about ten years ago.
From the town to the school?
Yeah. That's my understanding.
But you were around, right?
Yes.
And the funds for the service contract that we need to now have to. Sure that, is that, like, where is that now, or?
That's pending, so I'm like. Squeezing water out of a rock to get that in place, so. Yeah, so, um.
Personally, we're gonna do a better job of maintenance, but I mean, that's our goal.
Yeah, that's our goal, and if it's not, then we can terminate that contract and. Find a local contractor, maybe Pleasant Valley, to see if they'll do it, so we have more. Control and ability to make adjustments if we're not happy, so. I think it'll be good, right, yeah.
We're the four of them, I think, it was just like a camp. Alright, and, you know, cause they did it drag their feet for what, two years when you're trying to file the.
It was very frustrating, the, we had. Twenty streetlights out and, you know, it's like, that was in the transition, so that was understandable, but even before then, I know, like Cindy had reported. You know, it would take them forever to, to change the streetlights out, and we were paying, you know, for that service, and we'd go. Many months with a streetlight out.
Yeah, you're like, this is gonna burn up whole.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's been all this. For another time, but there was some conversation about the highway department being concerned about their maintenance, and I guess they're, they're, they're not gonna be responsible for maintenance, right?
No, 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 it's not gonna, highway's not gonna be doing the maintenance, no, that's correct. No. Yep. Great, um. Any other questions? Um, let's see, I will now conclude. The streetlight, um, budget, Caroline Lighting District Budget, uh, public hearing. And thank everybody for their attention and questions. Um.
In interest?
In interest, yeah. And with that, let's see, I guess I'll get, oh, oh, I wanna, I do wanna, even though I've closed, I do wanna, I have summary slides that are, I think. Of interest, um, and kind of both. Pull everything together, um, so. Um, so that this, uh, the. I alluded to it earlier in the presentation, but, uh, so the twenty twenty-three levy is a hundred and fifty-nine bucks less than the twenty twenty-two levy, so that's what we. You know, we, that's because we intentionally did that, and, um, and it's, uh, ninety-seven thousand below the twenty, the tax cap. Um, that was established, so five percent below that. Um. So, yeah. And then, um. And then this, these are just the numbers, um, that I talked about earlier, um, so. If, if you just do the calculation, uh, based on a two hundred thousand dollar property, um, the. Yeah, A and D A taxes, um, go down fifty-six dollars, the fire department minus twenty, and streetlights. Two dollars and fifty-one cents for a combined seventy-nine dollars, so. And there's some beautiful. Ball pictures from, from Caroline.
Yeah, it's a nice fashion, but.
Yeah. It's a wonderful chihuahua that somebody loves dearly, so. Great, okay, so, um, I'm gonna stop sharing. And with that, I will, um. Proceed to the agenda meeting and, um, ask if anybody wishes to address the town board. That privilege of the floor. And I'm not seeing any. Anyone from the public, okay. Um. Looks, looks like we're all pretty visible in the. In the camera view there, um. So I will, um. I guess I'll offer a resolution. To adopt the two thousand twenty-three Caroline, um. Town budget.
So that's. So, all three of them together.
Did you get that second, Jesse?
That's it, I'll take one.
Okay, great, and so, um, open it up for discussion or questions. If anybody, um. Or recommendations.
Just wanna thank you for a really smooth budget process this year, Marley, it was so well organized. In the presentation, I think it was really clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
All the time you put in.
Good. Happy to do it, so. Thanks.
Will you say the resolution?
Pardon me?
Will you say it?
Yeah, um, so, um, resolve the Caroline Town Board. Hereby adopt, um, the two thousand, uh, twenty-three, um. Down budget. And I guess, uh, with no further questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thanks, everybody. Another budget under the belt, so, good. And, uh, great, um, with that, I will open the meeting up for committee reports. Oh, I do wanna, before I do that, I have one more budget thought that I just, I just wanted to mention, um. That the Carol, I, uh, wanted to make sure people understood that, um. We do have, um, Caroline does have, um. Senior exemption limits and low income disability ex- exemptions, or, uh. For their taxes as well as a b- business improvement exemption, so those. Uh, those are things that we, we do have, and, um. Yeah, and next year we may be considering some amendments and additional ones, depending on what happens at the state level, so.
Those get, um. Those could apply for. Fifteen end of the year, the beginning of the year.
It will need to take effect in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, and so when do we, when was?
Those.
Time for us to announce those to the public?
So the ones, so the ones I just mentioned are in place. So those are standing, um, exemptions that.
What I'm asking, that, I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm just wondering, when is the best time to announce the public television apply to those?
They're automatic, aren't they?
Are they automatic?
They get it through the assessment.
Oh, I think this, yeah, the assessment office does it, yeah, yeah.
So it comes in the, the path.
Right.
So.
Including the business.
The safe raise for minimum, so.
Right.
At some point, you guys talk about that, it's.
Yeah.
We do that.
Yeah.
But I, I think we should put that off till next year to avoid confusing people, so, yeah. So.
I didn't make it to do this.
No, no, I think it's a good question.
Yeah.
And there is, uh. People have probably heard, um, there, there is a volunteer firefighter and ambulance workers, um. Exemption, ten percent exemption, um, and so, um, that just hasn't been. It hasn't been passed, hasn't been signed by the governor yet, so Jay Franklin is watching that, and so, um, we will. I'm kind of hoping that. We can just do all that with one fell swoop next year.
Right.
We'll see, so anyway, just, they're, just wanna make sure everybody understood there is a senior and disability exemption, uh, in place.
Questions they can call the first office.
Yeah. That's right. Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so with that, now I'll open it up for committee reports.
Okay, I'll give a happy zoning commissioner for, for, that the zoning commission. From my understanding, has completed its discussions of. It's trapped, it's now proofing. A draft document that intends to. Present this for public consumption. I think very soon, within the next week to ten days to two weeks.
So it'll be online?
Online with the anticipation of having, uh, presenting it. During the information session. Um, I think ideally at the end of the month. Um, I think all of this will be in that, it will be settled and announced just very, very soon, it just depends on their. Their final work of the word smithing of the document. Um, and, uh, their intention is going to be having to have. Two public information sessions, one virtual, one physical. It's not hybrid, I think that has to be what that also finalized, but I think the physical and the. The virtual for sure, but the physical is hybrid and mine still has to be. Ingrid with, depending upon how that can work out.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Then after that public information session following that, then. Sometime soon thereafter, there will be, there will, we'll have an official public hearing. On the. The zoning law that they, they intend to consider for presentation to the town board. After that public hearing. There's probably. Be some minor tweaking perhaps. Before they then take the final vote and pass something on to us. Um, most likely in. I would say mid-January to late January, probably. That's our problem, but it's getting very close.
Wait, see.
Very soon. I think it will be worth our while to, once that. Document is posted. For us all now addressing the town board. Begin taking a very, very detailed, serious look at it. So that we'll be, we'll be prepared to discuss it. And then six weeks later, once it's, so that. So that we can then. Move efficient. Late, come there on to make whatever decisions we have to make. That, so is that properly?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, wouldn't.
In the classes.
No, I'm, I'm wondering about the information sessions, if they're gonna have an in-person. And a, a Zoom one, wouldn't it make sense to just do one? By remote and do one in-person and just keep it.
Part of the difficulties is the challenge of. Finding a location. In which they can do both, also.
Be in the town.
In the town?
I don't think so.
Is it requiring a location in, in the town?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, but if it wasn't in the town, I think that would really, should be.
Well, I'm saying.
But what's your idea?
But. No, I, let me just explain just another aspect of this, to this point. Um, the. The information session is probably going to be run by not a quorum of the zoning commission until they. Can figure out. How that, I mean, they have a lot of figuring out to do for the public hearing, which will be at one time in one place. Most likely it's gonna have to be in the Brooklyn Bay Community Center or Bell Fire Hall or something like that. But there's still, on that stuff, so it's just preliminary for me to say anything definitive about that, because they're still making final decision.
What's your question?
I don't know.
Okay.
But I think, I think, I think they are hoping to do what they did last time, which is kind of both virtual and physical.
For the public hearing.
Public, for the information session, for the information session.
Oh, two separate ones.
Two separate ones, for the information session.
Right, exactly.
Which is not an official meeting of the zoning commission, it's an information session. The public hearing will be different, so the public hearing will be one meeting. Most likely needed to be hybrid. Um, to facilitate public. Need, and that, that they're, they're just beginning to work on to figure, figure that out, because that has some logistics. Because I, I don't think they're important.
We had three information units that were large.
Those were listing sessions.
Okay.
Yeah.
One by house.
Um, yeah. They had.
They did two.
Commission did four information sessions.
Correct.
Right.
So they did two and. That was in track, I can't remember all, I think, because I've been doing this for so long, two in, um.
Alright.
Maybe December, November.
It was, yeah, it was like December.
Two, and I believe it was April, I'd have to look.
May, I think.
Maybe, May, April, May, in that area.
Yeah.
And in the last two information sessions, they presented basically the first half of their document. This will be about the basement, yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's good. Any other questions or in, input? Any other questions or in- input for the zoning commission or?
And in the next meeting for the zoning commission. Where there will be, I think, just dotting the eyes on their plans for these meetings, it's going to be. I believe the date is the twenty second. I think it's the twenty second, and then there's gonna be a meeting on the twenty ninth.
Would like to make a request that there be a public information meeting in each chamber.
I, I think that that's probably a real reach, how. That's about.
Each chamber within the draft law? That's like.
Each chamber in the draft law.
Hmm.
That would be like six information sessions for them.
I mean, the information sessions are.
Totally discussion.
Yes, I do.
I'm like confirming.
There's one, it's, it was looking at.
Good, thanks, Sam.
Ag.
Ag.
Alright, so lots of things to add, first is that we've received the official, um. Grant approval, we've absorbed our, thank you, the, our farmland extension plan, which was very cool. Um, our next meeting is tomorrow at seven here.
Hmm.
Um, the agenda for tomorrow, so first, huge thanks to Erica for name, and she has done, like, just fun, beautiful, and on work. Submitting a grant, working with Monica, bringing everyone together, like, it's, it's really incredible, thank you to her. Um, tomorrow at the meeting, Monica, as well as Graham Savio from Cornell Cooperative Extension. Who will be working with on the plan, will be here, and this will be the kickoff meeting for the, um, process. Led by Monica. Um, the outline of what we're doing is actually talking about feedback on vision statements that we have. Previously been talking about, and we've collected a bunch of feedback and, um. Uh, mission, vision, goals, preferences, wordsmith name statements of what ag, um. Ideally would be in our town, and I can share a couple of those briefly. Um, and then Monica is gonna share kind of what the state expects to see in an ag plan, and then how she typically starts the process. By developing an agricultural profile. Um, and then we're also gonna begin to kind of brainstorm an initial community celebration forum. Kind of sharing events to just try to build the culture of ag in the town. To support all of this for sometime in the winter. Um, I can just briefly read the, like, three main kind of bullet points that we came up with for the vision, so if anyone who's. Interested in joining tomorrow, is interested in, like, helping us flesh this out, um, and just to refresh a vision is like. If all goes well, if all goes the way we want, this is what we will see in the town, right? Like, it's assuming that it is actually, it is so, so that's why it's raised this way. So the first point so far is, the town of Caroline is a place where diverse agricultural enterprises thrive. Um, and there's something to this, but I won't take too much time, the second is agriculture is a more essential part of our town's identity, culture, and pride. And then finally, farmers and landowners in Caroline have the responsible autonomy to steward and realize profit from their land. Um, so we have been working on these statements and what that really means for us for a while, and again, Erica has been like. Essential, so thank you to her again. And I think that's it, question?
Okay. Uh, uh, this is fantastic, Catherine giving the grant is.
Yeah.
Really suitor, I guess I have just a, that's a procedural technical question now that a grant is coming in for the committee. I guess it's from, it's from county, right, from whomever.
Uh-huh.
I guess since we're somewhat unclear about the constitution of the committee, should. Would it be necessary or helpful for the committee to now be officially composed by the town board for the administration? Of the grant, you hear what I'm trying to ask? Because, because there's actually a grant now, do we, should we appoint a chair and. Understand the composition of the committee that will be.
The committee to add committee, or?
Maybe.
Oh, sure, actually.
That, that, that's just totally procedural.
Yeah, so there's, there's additional agenda items that we are going to be reaffirming, um. Remember, we push it the right word, reaffirming the, the list of people's participation in the committee. Um, and we'll be presenting that to the board for resolution. Is, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's okay.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Because I have.
So the funding would go to the town. Uh, maybe would access it from the town, but.
The committee would get a discount?
No, no, it's, no discount. I, the funding and the grant money goes into the town.
Yeah.
Accounts and the committee access.
Yeah, so, um, Erica delivered a letter to me, it's in an envelope, and I haven't looked at it yet, so, I, it came in like yesterday, so. Um, I will check it to make sure if it's time sensitive, um, but.
And there's also, there's like the ag committee, that which is our town committee, which will have. Their perspective of this grant process, and then Monica will talk about this tomorrow, but there will be like a subcommittee. Of a, a committee moving forward, I wasn't sure what you were, there's a committee moving forward, who will be. Tasked with the implementation of the grant, which may or may not be like all.
Oh, I see.
About tomorrow, it's like, who, who, who wants to do that?
So you'll have a.
Basically, that's.
An ag plan subcommittee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we have to have designated people, and then, of course, moving forward, we also need to start paying Monica, right, like, we need to figure out how to. Pay all the people who are like working with us. Um.
Great.
Just been really generous at this point, but.
Yeah. You are, I mean, this sounds great, and, um. It, are you gonna be, um. Uh, connecting by Zoom for that meeting tomorrow or, or not?
I certainly can set up the link, we've done it every single time, and nobody's come, so.
If I can.
Open it, and I will.
Yeah.
Side at some point, like thirty-five minutes, close the link.
Okay.
Done, but.
I might try to join if I can, so, okay, thank you.
Why not, because?
Yeah.
Not trying.
They can use, make it, um, you know, like worthwhile, yes.
Okay, thank you, I, I might not be able to, but I'll try, but, and I have a, a specific thing that's way too specific for this.
Yeah.
But it's something that, that caught my attention, and I mentioned it at the, um. Solar webinar, uh, that Rod Howe, uh, organized, the first one. And that, there was an article in the New York Times about agro-solar. And I, I can't remember if I forwarded that to the board or not, um, I'm sorry, I didn't, so anyway, it was really intriguing, but it's been in Europe for like a decade.
Agro-solar?
Agro-solar, and it's, it's spatial placement of the, um, solar arrays that allows farm equipment.
Like what?
Vultures.
Agro-solar solution.
That's kind of the, the more specific.
Is it agro what?
Voltage.
Voltage, vol- voltage.
Agro-voltage.
Okay.
T I C.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That's the, that was from that, that are.
Okay, maybe, so, okay. Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I mean, it just, and so my question was, how come? Because, you know, I've, I've heard about this, you know, I mean, we understand this tension between taking farmland for solar and stuff, and.
Wow.
And it actually is a win-win, because it actually. It, it creates partial shade that can, can enhance growing conditions for some crops and stuff, so. And, you know, so I don't know if it's a matter of, uh, you know, like, and at the state level, you know, we have these, um. The OREs regulations. You know, so there might be some latitude to advocate with the state to accommodate this, I don't know, I don't know if those regulations. Curtail it or, or prevent it or not, yeah, I'm just, I just thought I'd throw it out there as, as a something to. Really caught my attention as something that could be really.
Agro-voltage, coming soon to a farm.
Yeah.
There's some challenges.
Yeah.
It's like doubles loss.
Uh, might be well worth the cost.
Yeah, exactly, there's some un.
Yeah.
Funded. Or unaccounted.
Right.
Well, it's what it's kind of.
It's a great point, and it's such a great example, though, of, you know, Caroline being creative, Caroline being unique.
Right. Well, I've always thought that. Yeah. Yeah, I've always thought that solar should be on carports.
Right.
And big parking lots, and it, the, the, the reflex answer I get always, it costs more, costs too much, and it's like. Yeah, but you're not getting the same thing, so, it's like, you know, we gotta, yeah, so.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yep, super, and, yeah, like I said, Erica, you know, she's very creative, and her knowledge around. Innovation, and, you know, what is farming is, I think, really key for our town, because our town is not. A traditional farming community, but there's this incredible.
Because of Cal.
Interest. So, yeah. Yeah, so we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, yeah, very exciting, that's great.
Really exciting.
Yeah. Excellent, that's, uh. That's good, that's, thank you.
A little bit of building property to the old town hall, student. Will succeed, giving, give us a workout life, the restoration of old town hall. Susan Holland, I'll, I'll, to, you know, just shepherd the work of works, moving this along. Because there's certainly this that been done in that, and that, so, um, Steve gave us a building that five page. Along, here's.
Yeah, so everybody got that today, right?
Sorry.
It's in your email. That's great, yeah, and we had a really nice meeting with them for about two hours right here, Cal and I did.
I'd like to. Come up with a little dance of a project, so we're back for the next time in six more years or something.
How about the Molly Adams?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, exactly what I was gonna say.
Just under, you know.
Molly Adams Project.
Sign my role, I mean, the number of people strive by here.
Yeah.
You know, what, what.
So, yeah, I, I'm glad you, you know, thanks, Cal, that's, I, and I. So do look through that, because there's some decisions we have to make, or there's some, we had a nice discussion, but it didn't pay any, it was. Kind of, I mean, I felt like it was no limits, which is great, so what about this, okay, well, so, we'll have to make some. Decisions about, you know, how we wanna mold it. Uh, but. Yeah, I mean, Susan, when she's looked at it both times, and said, this, this building's in great shape, um, so.
There's kind of a lot, there's a lot.
Yes.
I mean, insulation, they are seeing like, for eating, cooking, for us. And preservation, when things, just the room upstairs.
Yeah.
Being worked on, just sort of makes data, the condition. Yeah, people better, you're.
Yeah.
Right. So, um. Vegas, so anybody that may have, if there was anything, there was speed limit.
I'd like to do that, too.
No reply yet.
Well, yeah, nothing, can we check up on it somehow?
Well, I, I can do that, but, I mean, that, this is the process, they, they will get back to you, and it just takes some time.
So it is, it is, we have.
It was submitted, and, yeah, we're waiting for that, yeah.
But I don't know, I think.
Yeah.
You don't have.
That's, no, I mean, that's part of us, that's the thing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, um.
I just, you know, was, you know, through the same rules, but, and.
Well, the, um, yeah, that's the county, and the state, the state will come down and talk about the. The, the application for the grant, that all the towns got together on, have, you know, heard anything back yet.
Hmm.
Riding through hopefully, um, and, uh.
But all they hope is not to be back, you know, and that helps move things along.
Thank you, by the way, actually, yeah, I think it's a, that's. That's a thing, I mean, at some point. We get the grant, we'll get a planner, who will look at the town. And the speed limit, certain traffic, and safely plan it, but they, and make a big plan.
Yeah.
For the town, what rural townships can do. For us, and then we apply the funding for, after that, so it's, it's down loaded, so. And we, and it's really been related, but an im- immediate thing is like, what is the status of that? Your speed is silent, sit outside the highway departments. I'd like to know that. When we move that, bring that, like a.
Jesse would know the most about it.
Bob and I sat down shortly after we discussed it last time, I couldn't get our head away, I just saw how. And it needs software issues. Linked to moving it somewhere else, or, yeah, it's like the Wi, it's like the Wi-Fi, it's just picking it up, um. Putting it somewhere else after it's out of range, it's the software's program set up to the Wi-Fi, the highway, but once you move it.
But, so that's in order to collect data, is that correct?
That's right, so do we, I guess I'm suggesting that, like, data collection is the side of the one.
Right.
Yeah, like.
Do we really need data collection?
It'd be nice, but it would be nice to be able to slow people down, because it's, if you slow people down. And it doesn't need to be there, like, that's, yeah, if, if, if we can't use it. Or if we can't use that side, can we get the county, so loan us one, can we get on a list, say, we need one. On this county road, because we used to do that, they used to run down in Brooktondale, these be different places, we got those around. Year ago, back in the nineties, I mean, we would request the county, and the county would haul it in for a week, and. That was very young, but it would be something, because right now, it's not doing the county good, just the town that's off. Mm-hmm. Use.
Well, I, I think. I think we should make use of ours. Great.
You pay for this thing, the town pay for this thing, right, so it just.
I mean, we can use it now without the data collection.
Right, I don't think the data collection is important right now.
I think the last time this came up, Bob said they were making a trailer for it, is that right? I know he said that. Is it, do you know if that's done, or no, you don't know? Yeah, okay, so question for.
Yeah.
That could be the intermediate measure for landing road, yeah. Yeah, like while we're saving for this response, just put the sign on and.
Or somewhere else.
It can be moved, right now, I mean, it's, uh. I, it's probably still.
Probably go to our son.
Um.
So we could put it on, on spread probably.
Oh, is it counted, I don't know, we're on.
Well, I mean, I, I bet, I bet it could be done, I, you know, you don't think so, Jesse?
No.
Just can't.
I'm sure, I think we have that conversation.
Okay.
The county run rate.
Okay.
Right, I mean, right now, it's not a county, so, like.
Yeah.
It's been a whole thing very little.
True.
Yeah.
It happens, yeah.
I feel like, I feel like you're trusting the council, they're like, say, I mean, we, you could go to sign, like, you know, in seventy-nine, in Mecklenburg. Somebody's got a sign on the front yard, going, slow down. Okay, so maybe it's not right. It's about, all about that. Keep me happy, like.
Right.
So. Um, okay, so the, let's see, um, can we report? Uh, uh, the use, and it's not the use commission, what's it called, um? The, uh, the Tompkins County Advisory Board, uh, had a meeting, um, I'm. It's, it's just like, yeah, guys, you need to, like, stop using acronyms, because, um. The woman who runs it just is so fast, and she's like this, not, but what, they have a schedule, and they have different people working reviews in the county. And give presentations, so I'll be learning more about what's going on in the county, I did ask about other things, but I know that's going on in the county reviews. That don't seem to be touched, and so we talked about funding, and, um. I'm really hoping to get more funding directed towards Caroline, in, as I learn fully about how this thing is. Um, and then the, I guess, the broadband committee, for broadband committee, yeah.
Before you go to there, can I ask, um, so, um. Titus Scott.
Mm-hmm.
Sent an application to me, so, um, maybe we can appoint him at the visiting, okay, great.
Um, so do we appoint him? That'd be great.
Yeah, well, let's do it at the visiting, so we can put it on the agenda, and.
Okay.
But I'll let him know.
Yeah, that was a great question, but, uh, the, uh.
Yeah.
At the information, um, here in, that was a good statement, that's a. At the information here, into the zoning committee game, uh, that, in May, I think that's, I gave a. A very nice statement, anyway, I wasn't, so, yeah, okay.
Just one, go ahead.
Alright, yeah, okay. I got the grant, so I got the grant in, um. On the thirty-first, uh, so that was the Tompkins, um, county. Uh.
Recovery fund.
Recovery fund, I think, recovery fund, but, recovery fund, so that was, um. Like, over six million dollars that the county had, and. Like over six million dollars that the county had, and so this town applied for. Uh, money to, for broadband, to piggyback on to Dryden's broadband initiative. Drive the fiber, um, which is a not-for-profit, she'd be able to bring broadband into Caroline. Um, is a public option, and so it's a not-for-profit. And, um, Dryden's just starting to sign people up on it, and so it's like right now it's forty five dollars a month with the broadband. And, um. So, actually exciting, and that will go down as they pay off the bond, the back of the cost of broadband will decrease. Um, and.
Cause you know how speeds they're offering, they offer varying speeds.
I don't, I can't tell you about. All this was, yeah, I mean, so there's. What we, what I did was I applied for funding, um, for a step plan from Hunt Engineering. Which is the engineering group that is, is doing it in Dryden, um, that would match up with that. And, um, they're, they would give us that kind of information, you know, like all the. All the details and how it gets on and how much it costs and what steps we can take as we move kind of across Caroline. Um, and, uh, so that's exciting, and so we applied the money for the.
And how much, like, how much did you apply?
The, uh, two hundred and forty seven thousand.
So that then would be masked with our three hundred.
Thirty eight, yeah, yeah.
That's great.
That's right, so I put down that, that down, there's something we have. Um, and so, um, we've been talking with the town of Dryden on this. The planning board and to talk to Ray and to talk to Hunt Engineering and Jason wrote a lot of support. And, uh, yes, it's really exciting, actually, um.
Very exciting.
They're, they, Dryden put in, um, a grant application for making like a nexus, a point of, a pop. On Yellow Barn Road, and that's what we would hook on to, kind of like this network that goes out. So it wouldn't be getting rid of the commercial options for people, this would be. A lower cost option and would also be going into the areas that Haley and, and Spectrum don't go to. And so that, that is the really great thing, and that's, that's why Dryden's doing the same things and they have spots that they couldn't get served. So they're also accepting, um, TC three.
What I thought was incredibly cool, um, with the public, I guess we have a little public, but Kate sent us, uh. Coverage map that Dryden. And it covers all the way across the Dryden line along. Along the, uh, northern side of Caroline.
It's literally like, right, obviously right next to it, but that map made it really.
And, and as she explained, the coverage then would be five mile, six mile radius. By radius out, right, it covered darn near the entire town, you know.
We, we saw the fact that it's still. And how are they doing this at a speed like hasn't been able to be done before, like I'm just, I'm curious on like how this. I have the engineering report for driving to your student, I, I, um, but. And, uh. But they're running up, they're running optic fiber down their real trail, that's their, their backbone right now. Um, and then they're right, um, so they don't have to pay rent on a, the nice area of the line. For a lot of it, um, and then they're, and then they're using the nice ones, uh. Uh, and it's gonna be optic fiber, it's just that they're not really making a profit, they don't expect to make a profit. Right, it does rely on getting people to voluntarily say, okay, I'm not going to do spectrum. I'm gonna go, so because you need populated areas. Right, to join in, to be able to support the people further out. So, um, that's one reason Brian is happy about us going on, that some more people sort of joined on, I could get the bond paid off. And when the money goes down, a lot of people will sign up, so. Um, and they, the technology is not possible.
It's a profit thing, that, we keep, that's why the providers just don't go, cause it's too sparse, they won't do it.
So, and, so this is, um, they've done a lot of, um, the legal legwork and, um. So, for us, so I'm, I'm actually really excited about, about. Grabbing on to this, um, and, and for the work.
It's exciting, yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah, oh, that's interesting, yeah.
Excellent, that's very exciting, also, very cool. Um, any more committee reports? As if we hadn't had enough, very good, thank you, um, with that, I guess I will. Move on to approve the minutes of the October twelfth.
Let's wait till we get to the agenda.
So I'll offer approval of minutes of October twelfth. The, uh, business, the business meeting, October thirteenth, budget workshop and October twenty fourth, special meeting. Yeah, well, we're not, we're, we don't do those by resolution, we just, we. We just ask if anybody has any input for Jesse and then approve them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think they look good. Any thoughts? Great, the minutes are approved, thanks Jesse, as always, really. So helpful, yeah, great. And let's see, so now I will open it up for, I guess, agenda items for the business meeting.
We've got the youth commission. Of course, for sure.
Yeah, Titus, uh, got that, and ag appointments will be a reservation. Well, I wanted to mention today, um, also, something very positive, I thought, so. It was, um. Julie, who is working upstairs to organize, um, had. Come and talk to me and Jesse about some, um, archiving questions, I was having trouble with the printer, so. Uh, we steered her to Alana Congdon, uh, at the county, because they, they have this laser, laser piece. Uh, program funded, um, for archiving and. So I bumped into, um, Julie today and she said, you just missed Alana, she'd just gone out the door. And she brought over, uh, a flat scanner or something and had really helped her with it. And, you know, Julie's often running with this, so.
Great.
It's really just fantastic, I'm so.
If you haven't been up to the history in the last couple of months, she's done so much up there. And, um, that just looks wonderful, so.
And we can go back to the meeting, maybe. Agenda items for next week, so, I had an agenda item, so I'd like to. If you have any feedback on the RFP, I wanna. Uh, therefore, we should probably articulate a, um. A schedule, it'll have to be revised from what I put on there before, but, you know, if you get the schedule. Proposed and, um, I thi- I think it's pretty solid, um.
Have we heard that from Bob?
I haven't heard from Bob about it, I will, I'll send him an email or something and ask him about it, and ask him to send me his, if he has any thoughts or whatever.
Where is he? He's usually at the meeting. I was wondering where Bobby was.
I don't know, I don't know, yeah, so, I think Jesse couldn't make it tonight. So, um.
Because, because we'll be doing that at the business meeting and it's really, really important and it. Really often, really depends on your, you also to steer us through this. Particulation, I'd like to propose that we postpone next week's business meeting for the following week and then back vacation. That we can all be here to do that together, because I think it's one of the most consequential things that we're actually doing. In the near future, so I'd just like to, I don't know if this is proper.
It's okay.
Maybe to do that, but I'd like to propose that we, um. Hold the business meeting. On the sixteenth, I would say the sixteenth. That way Mark will be here, because I really don't think we should. Move forward that, that is leadership on them.
I'm happy with that, either, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
You just go ahead, I try, I'll try to zoom or something.
Have a conversation and. Nothing's gonna happen to us.
Like I would have anticipated, but.
Yeah. Like, maybe the pilots will eat a rotten fish dinners or things. I'm certainly good with that, and if you were at the beginning of the year, I actually proposed. Two week intervals between meetings.
Which I actually think in January, we should think about returning to, because. It's just made a lot of sense.
Damn fine, I saw.
Maybe, yeah, anyway. We'll see how the schedules work and, anyway, so you don't offer a resolution to him?
Oh, yeah, I would like to offer a resolution. For the town board to hold the. November business meeting. On Wednesday, November sixteenth, May.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I thought you were saying the number second.
Oh, oh, did she have a second?
Mark never guessed the second, so.
So, all in favor of that? I opposed, great, okay, good plan. I'm hoping we'll have, maybe, um, so Bob and I met with, um, TG Miller, Donnie. Couple of mornings ago and had a good discussion, so Bob was gonna circle back to Barry and. So I hope by that meeting, that, um, maybe we can have a, a new. Proposal to, to turn around and get out for a bit, um, keep that project moving, so. Is that ticked up?
Both.
Well, big discussion.
Yeah, it'll be discussion on both, yeah.
I hope so, yeah.
And who's signing vouchers? Uh, well, it's not, I mean, I, I guess, yeah, and.
Now we got. That's fine. I did it, well, I see I did this. I don't think about slapping. You know, the other thing that I'd just like to mention, Mark, now that Cal brought it up, is I think it would be good. For us to now ask, flip to get in the habit of monthly reports to the board. Which we talked about when I started, I'd like that to get going, now that he's moved in and settled. That way we'll know.
Yeah, he's done a couple.
It even came up last night during the zoning commission, there's some. Questions about how many, how many starts we have, and I just didn't know. It's just be good to know that, how many permits are coming in. I mean, it's part when, when, it's, it is part of the job description, I'm just like, I don't have to kick it in.
I can't think of it, can you? I guess not. If you think of something, you know. Let me know. Yeah, so, um, if we don't have anything else, I guess I will offer a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Cal, any lengthy discussion? Doubt, all in favor? I opposed, great. Thanks, everybody.